Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Calumet Public School District 132 Board Meeting, August 14. John?
Yes. Time, six o'clock. Uh, Brown, absent. Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent. Kimbrough?
Here.
Love?
Here.
Story?
Here.
Harris?
Yes, here. The pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda, suggestion motion beer hereby moved that the Board of Education approved the agenda for the August 2024 Rutherford Session as presented. May I have motion? Motion by Ms. Dixon. Second by Ms. Story. John O'Callaghan?
Yeah. Brown, absent. Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story? Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. All right, just a little look. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Uh, community. Um, tonight for our superintendent's report, uh, we will have Mr. Corley to give us a facilities update. And then, uh, we will have Ms. Bates, our Executive Director of Academic Services, to give us a district-wide uh, instructional goals for the year. Uh, before they come, I would just like to say we opened school this week for our teachers and our students. Um, I shared information with the board. On yesterday, we had more than ninety-five percent of the students who are registered uh, to be in attendance in school, so that's a huge kudos to our staff and their diligent work of making sure we got our students here. Uh, Teacher Institute Day on Monday and Tuesday was outstanding. Uh, thank you to all of the administrators from the buildings who, uh, worked really diligently to put that on. Uh, thank you to Board Member Harris, Dixon, and, uh, Ms. Love for being a part of our Institute Day as well as being at the school on the first day. Mr. Corley.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Board. Uh, just a, thank you, uh, just a quick, uh, uh, update on, uh, facility projects that we had going on this summer. Uh, I'll start with the science labs here. Um, the science labs are complete. They were complete on time, ready for a student. I can see it on the first day of school. Students were very excited. They, they're like, well, what, what did they do to this room? It's like, I'm like, was it, is it bad or is it good? Like, it's like, what did they do? So I, I, I'm very excited to be able, to be a part of, you know, being able to provide a new experience for the students. Um, so everything is fully functional in the room, divo cabinets, uh, sinks, uh, new furniture. Uh, everything is, is fully functional and the students are excited about it. And so are the teachers, uh, Mr. Wilson and Ms. Conley. Both, uh, Mr. Wilson, seventh grade, Ms. Conley, sixth grade, were both excited about having new rooms to teach out of. Um, moving on to the Calumet Middle School Gymnasium Edition Project, um, we are pretty much there. Uh, we are very, very excited about giving everybody the first look at our up, uh, upcoming, upcoming, um, grand opening ceremony this coming Saturday at ten AM. Looking forward to everybody being there. Um, we are, every single area in the gymnasium is pretty much at, I will say about ninety, ninety-eight percent, uh, final completion. And that two percent is just making sure everything is, the final clean is done, everything is being spanned. Uh, but as far as equipment and everything, uh, everything is installed and ready to go. And you will get a chance to see that very, very shortly. Uh, for the people who hadn't had a chance to walk through yet, even if you have been through, it's totally different from where, from what you've seen when you, when you walked through. It's not the same. Uh, so excited about that. I'm very proud to say that, you know, I'm proud to say that I had a part in providing this for the community and especially for our students. Um, and all of the buildings, just in general, overall, were all ready to go, first day of school. Uh, actually didn't get a lot of requests from teachers, you know, you know, can't do this and that. Uh, so that was, that was exciting. That means that my team did a great job over the summer, making sure that everybody had what they need on day one, and that was the goal. And that's pretty much it.
The only thing I add to that report, Mr. Corley, uh, I'm happy to announce to the Board that we came in under budget for both the science lab project as well as the jail. So, to go with to, uh, Mr. Corley, uh, his leadership working with our architects, DLA. Uh, Henry Brothers has been an outstanding partner to work with. So in September, we will have a more comprehensive financial overview. Uh, but that was the goal that I gave them. Uh, that we needed to come in under budget and that we needed the building to be ready, uh, to roll in the first week of school. Uh, that was very difficult. Uh, their initial progress, their initial time might have had us finish in sometime in mid-September. And I told them that wasn't acceptable. So, uh, kudos to the team. I'm really excited to, uh, walk through the doors on Saturday morning. Uh, and I'm really excited just to start utilizing the building for our students and community.
And like I, Alexander, it's great that we came under budget, but we didn't want to cut any corners either. So are we, oh, we'll check it out.
So, when you come under budget, so part of the, um, part of the plan is ten percent contingency. So your goal is not to blow your contingency. Now, stuff happens every day. So you may have to dip into it or things that happen that, you know, unforeseeable, so you have to dip into it. But the goal is not to spend all of it, so you don't want to cut. So, um, no corners were cut. Um, I think our architects did an outstanding job with the design, uh, and the quality of materials. Uh, when you get in, you'll be impressed. It's not just your typical building. So, uh, I, I look forward to your responses to it. Uh, we have seen some things that we would like to make improvements to moving forward. Uh, when you see a design on a sheet of paper on a presentation, it means very little until you get in the building. And then you start talking about functionality and how does this work when kids go that way. So we do have a few things that we would like to look forward to in the future. Uh, but I am very satisfied with, uh, the product that we have.
Thank you.
Ms. Bates?
Is mine? Is mine? Do you have the?
I have the clicker.
You gotta give a clicker? Oh. Okay, you know I'm challenged with this one. As much as I do in presentations, the clicker and the me just, uh, work well together, but we're gonna break this happen. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, we are just, first, it is such an honor for us to be at the brink of a brand-new school year with a lot of incredible, wonderful things that are happening here in this district. Uh, I am very thankful for the work that's been put forth, and I'm sure as you hear more this year and see more this year of the work that's done structurally, I hope that you will be as proud as we are and as we put a lot of effort, a lot of, uh, commitment to this process. Our guiding principle, so, yeah, I know you've had a chance to look over this, so, okay. These are five pillars that are really important for us, but the most important thing for you to remember, this is what we're looking at throughout the year. The high standards of rigor, rigorous curriculum and powerful instruction, all the way down to sound fiscal operation accountability system. Um, my boss reminds me often about my spending opportunities or lack thereof to make sure that I am in alignment to the resources that we have. Our system of support, we spent time recently, we being the, uh, principals and myself, um, training down in Bloomington, Illinois, on NTSS to make sure that we're able to provide those special supports for not just our, our regular students, but for all of our students overall. And then, um, engaging our family, and I apologize for kind of jumping around, but when I look at these, they're, the priorities are, they're all there of importance, but this piece here I find to be most important. Engage and empower our families. Without having our families involved, our children won't grow. It takes a community to get our, to, to make the progress. So, uh, thankfully with Ms. Washington, myself, and others, and Dr. Saverson, we have done a really great job of making sure, and under, uh, Dr. Alexander's leadership, to make sure that we are focusing more on, uh, empowering our families through our workshops, through communication. Um, Mrs. Spars has done a wonderful job of making sure that our, our Hispanic community is not just a community, but they are part of this Calumet family. So we're still, there's still work to be done, but we are committed. We are committed in, um, the number four assessment, effective teachers and leaders and staff. I am extremely excited, and anybody who knows me know this is what I've been talking about. We have certified staff here at Calumet in our critical areas. And that's, uh, part of the hard work and the vision of just trying to make sure that as we enter the twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, that we have certified, well-trained staff and in the math, in the reading. And that's been significantly important for us as we move forward into this year. So as you look at our district-wide goals, um, from twenty, for twenty-three, twenty-four, and then to twenty-four, twenty-five, you see there are, um, yellow Xs in the middle. We're still working on those goals, especially for the reading and math. We have not received our final data from our IAR assessments back in the spring. The, uh, ISB, Illinois State Board of Education, is still, um, making some modifications, and we will present the final data to you soon. But the piece that I think is very encouraging is right down at the bottom. Decrease the number of out-of-school suspensions by twenty-five percent and decrease the number of out-of-school suspensions by ten percent. We have spent a great deal of time on ongoing support with our students. One of the things that started when I came here three years ago, when we started using CHAMP, provided our teachers with opportunities for small group instruction within their PLCs on, uh, classroom management. Secondly, we've done more, especially here at the middle school, restorative practices and PBIS. Those have been some critical pieces, but I also want to say what's been the critical piece within this whole spectrum is the commitment of the staff, the commitment of the leadership team to ensure that we do everything possible to keep our children here and to really dig deep to help them to be the best that they can be. Next steps. So as I mentioned, um, I am, I am a proud, proud person of this community, and I believe in what we've done. Um, we're still working on, uh, things as it says, the increased targeted professional learning. For past two years, we have had ongoing professional development to increase our teacher engagement and instruction. Not just the mere instruction of the day, but what our students need now. Targeted intervention supports this year, another proud moment. We have supports, we have intervention supports that's going to take place, that our teachers will now have someone to support them in this process. Uh, we review and refine our curriculum. We have new curriculum in all of our A levels. And therefore, that means that we're still in this training mode. One of our latest curriculums that we bought last year is Amplify Science. Amplify Science was rated number one in the United States for science curriculum, for hands-on science curriculum. And I am thankful that our staff decided that's what they wanted for themselves. So with that being said, we had to change the project, the trajectory of what we used to do versus what needs to be done. And that has been excellent on behalf of our, our staff, especially here at the middle school. It's even going to be better because we have certified staff. Um, we would improve support for ELL and special education. Uh, Dr. Harris, myself, and I, and I also, uh, want to just mention, um, Dr. Saverson. We've been having ongoing communication in what can we do to, um, not only streamline that process but make sure that our parents fully understand the services that are provided here, and hopefully they'll be able to better support us. So this year, along with our bilingual team, we're meeting together, we're having conversations, and that's going to be ongoing so that what I share in my curriculum meetings will also be a ripple in effect, what's shared in bilingual, especially in our, in our sped departments. Utilizing our classroom libraries to create literacy-rich environments. The goal when I came here three years ago, uh, from Dr. Alexander, that he wanted brand-new classroom libraries in all of our elementary classrooms and our E L, our, our ELA classrooms that happened. We now have brand-new books, we have brand-new diverse books. And, and I, and I also want to say, not only do we have multiple properties in the classroom, we have multiple properties in the library. We have a digital collection, Myon, which has five thousand titles, and so those five thousand titles are for each of the preschools that's in this district. Um, additionally, we provided for our social studies teachers, our contact teachers here. They also have classroom libraries of focus-driven, social studies-related, to ensure that we are in alignment to the Illinois learning standards. Uh, technology to support reading instruction. All of our curriculum here in District 132 is a blended model, meaning it's not only book content, but it's an online content. So there is no way in the world that we can miss opportunity, because we have the resources and we have the talent to make that happen. We also have different, we also have Lexia, Boostree, and IXL, for example, to help us to address our differentiated learning needs. In regards to math, um, the continuous process, and this has been our goal last year and will continue to be this year, um, focusing on our math, focusing on what we need to do. And, and with that being said, we have an interventionist who was part-time, she's a retired teacher. She comes over here to, uh, Calumet. She started mid-year last year, excited, excited to be with us again this year. And, um, so we're going to see change. It is going to be excellent change. Um, we examined our assessment tools that align to IAR. We originally looked at some other assessment, uh, tools. There's another assessment tool that we'll probably examine, because not all, not all assessment tools today are aligned to the Illinois readiness assessment. I mean, and, I said that wrong, Illinois Assessment of Readiness. Not all of our test, testing systems are aligned to what we do here in Illinois. One of the test, um, companies that we looked at initially was iReady. There are other assessment tools that we're going to look at, because NWA does not align successfully to what IAR is asking our children to do. Uh, incorporating algebra instruction for our accelerated students. We started that last year aggressively, and we're going to continue that momentum. Uh, Ms. Williams did an outstanding job. As you may recall, Ms. Williams was our only certified teacher in math. She not only taught seamlessly algebra, but she provided lesson support for all of our subs for those, for grades six and seven, on top of teaching and planning for her, her lessons. So she did an outstanding job, and I, now that we have, again, certified staff, it's just gonna move up a little higher, like the Jeffersons. We're gonna move on up. So, um, increasing professional development, uh, again, as something I've already mentioned, u- unit tests are incorporated throughout the district. This year and last year, we're, last year was our first year using our own, uh, scope and sequence chart. This year, I can say without a shadow of a doubt, everybody has it in their hand and online for both social studies, science, reading, and math, all created by the staff here in Calumet School District 132. More instructional support, um, during after-school tutorial. Uh, that is already, uh, in progress, and we're just, um, tweaking a couple of things to make sure that we are ready when we start our after-school program. All right, next steps. Student attendance and student behavior. Sometimes they go hand in hand. So daily monitoring of student attendance and tardies, that's significant, because if your children aren't here, we can't make the progress. And if there's a behavior challenge, we can't make the progress. So we have to come up with ways to address those things, not only well, but be assertive and practical at the same time. So as I mentioned to you earlier, for the student behavior, we have in place restorative justice. We also use CHAMP, the Classroom Management System. We're also doing more monthly district-wide attendance, those team meetings, and we have time now, structured time, where our, uh, principals will meet directly with, within grades, and also once a month, um, uh, af, it's not after-school, it's an early release day. Monthly student and school-wide incentives for positive attendance. You know, we, our children today are accustomed to being celebrated, and we want to celebrate them. We don't want them to, we, this, this is just a process. We want to celebrate the excellence in them coming to school, the excellence in their behavior. Uh, the home business to address chronic truancy by attendance team, which will be an offshoot of our school improvement team. And then the parent contract, contracts for chronic accesses and tardies. That is a way for us to really monitor, not only monitor, but also to look at what's, what we've done and why we've done it. So we'll be tracking and analyzing, uh, and keeping detailed notes of those conversations with those parents. And then the other piece on S E L support for students and family, parent and staff training will be ongoing through, uh, for our FACE events, and we'll also make sure that our parents have opportunities to have workshops during the morning. And that, and we started doing that last year, so we have, we have parent workshops in the mornings, and then we have the parent workshops in the evenings. So trying to make sure that we cover all our parents, not only on in-person, but virtual as well. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Question real quick. I meant to stop you, but go three with attendance. Um, what was the overall average? Do we make that call? Because it's at ninety percent? So, we're on, on the goal? On the, on the district-wide goals, because it had an X on it. So increase overall, um, average daily attendance from ninety point two percent to ninety-three percent when we're doing the F L S. So I have to give you the exact numbers. We have made significant gains, but not to the level of where, what you, not to the goal where we wanted to reach. And, and that is because of, of course, we've had some issues with logging systems. We had some issues with keeping up. So our, our record keeping has improved greatly and more accountability when we meet with Dr. Alexander on a monthly basis.
So are you using Skyward? This is Skyward system?
It's a Skyward system, but also depending on the notes that were provided by staff as well. So it's the same thing with any of our, any of our systems, is it, it relies on people inputting the information on a consistent basis. Middle school, are you taking, I know you should be taking attendance in every class, but what, what get reported though? Is that when they go to their homeroom and then they put the attendance down? We do attendance the first thing in the morning and throughout the day. But as I mentioned, when it comes to behavior, any infractions and things of that nature, it could be on paper, and we'll say, we'll do it later, and sometimes those are missed. You're welcome. Don't, don't go so fast. Oh. Just make sure you get the, make sure you get the numbers, that's all. Absolutely, absolutely.
The actual, the number is there on the board. The actual number is ninety that we hit.
You hit it at ninety-one-two?
Nine, no, it's, the actual number that we hit was ninety-one point three.
Oh.
So that's, we made growth. We just didn't hit the target where we wanted to be. And that's the same thing for reading and math as well. So that was, one thing that basically we did do is explain the, the rubric. So a red X would have meant we didn't come anywhere near it, but the yellow X, we didn't meet the goal, but we made some progress, so we're in transit to it.
I'd love to answer that.
The goals are there on the, um...
Yes, ma'am.
So just two questions. Um, so you're talking, you've alluded to a new assessment tool or some checking of assessment tools. Can you talk about the process? And I'm hoping that we don't get, uh, we don't hear about it come May. Uh, but, but could you, could you talk about how you're thinking about assessing assessment tools?
So, let me just say, when you're selecting any kind of assessment tool, it's not something that you can do within a couple of weeks, because it takes time. You might have to do a pilot run. You might have, and then also look at cost and the benefits of it for the district, our size. And that's, that's the process. So you, you might have to do a pilot with one school to see, the, uh, one classroom, a couple of classrooms to see, how effective is it, and based on what teacher input as well. Because oftentimes, companies will sell you a myriad of things, but you don't need all that. We may only need a slice of that pie, not the whole pie. So that's why it says it's gonna take a moment, maybe easier, probably about three to four months, and then having to present that information back to, to you as a possibility of recommendation. So it is a process. It does take a moment, and I, I personally, as a, as an assessment person, I never recommend anything that's serious to be taken for granted as far as time. There needs to be a deep dive. It needs to be looking at the standards, because Illinois has their own standards, and then there are the common core standards. So the common core standards are one thing different than the Illinois priority standards. And then, of course, there's the NGSS standards, that's the science standards. So we have all those things to consider, and what's in that system that's going to help us. Doesn't have something that a teacher can use right away, because that's another one of our things. We want to make sure that our teachers have some feedback that they can use immediately and not having to plan that is already there.
And then the other question is just about, um, the improvements of, eh, for e, um, English language learning and special ed. Can you just sort of cue, cue up a few of the two or three highlights of?
Absolutely. So for both, uh, for both, um, our ELL community and our spec community, UnderStavis, which is our ELA, uh, reading series, we have spent time in training, special, professional development training on the resources that Stavis provides for us. So it's not an additional cost. It's already embedded in our curriculum. And it's the same thing for divisions mathematics. It's already embedded. And there are sections both online and in the book that we can use, that students can use at home, as well as in school. For, uh, here in the middle school, for example, Stavis came out last year and provided one-on-one training support, uh, to help to ensure that our middle school teachers understood, especially Mrs. Spars, who's been working closely, to make sure that all of our teachers, uh, who are supporting our bilingual students have the resources. So it's already embedded. We didn't have to buy a separate product. It's embedded into the curriculum that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Bates.
You're welcome.
Uh, moving on to considered gender items. Suggested motion beer hereby moved that the Board of Education approved the considered gender items A, B, C, and D as presented. May I have a motion?
Are we going, before we do this, to remove A, or do we want to close session? First, to remove personnel items?
Yes, we're going into closed session, but you, you look at A?
Well, you said we want to close session. Could we just go on to close session for pers, um, personnel items? A, that's it.
Okay. Um, tabling the personnel items. So it would be six B, six C, and six D, uh, to vote on.
So a quick question too. Eh, so I just wanted to make sure that the highlighting on, uh, the minutes is just a, it, it doesn't mean anything, right? There were some documents where you highlighted, um, or at least on the, the copies that I had where the minutes had some highlighting. Um, and I couldn't tell if you were referring, whether you're calling our attention to?
So there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
So let, yes, it is. So you, just begin to talk about that after. So, if we are tabling the, uh, A. The personnel. So now it's just a voting on the six. B, C, D. Motion on the floor. So after, after this. So six B, C, D. May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Brown, second. Second by Ms. Dixon. Question?
Question.
Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
And so that's what I'm trying to, just, unless I missed it, it seemed that there was some highlighted areas on them.
Um, John just stated that it's nothing.
I'll take a look at it, but that is, if there is anything highlighted, that's probably inside the software and not on the actual document. So I will show you the actual document once it's up for signature, but I, I'll look into that. But no, there's nothing highlighted or intended to be highlighted for anything in particular. So I'll look into that. That is purely unintentional. So I'll look into that.
Thanks, John. Ms. Love?
Yes, I have a question about the fund balance.
Okay.
Okay. You know, uh, at the last meeting, we were talking about, uh, fifty-two dollars for the staff, I mean, for students' fee. And, uh, I was looking at what the kids have to bring for their school supplies and stuff. But at the meeting, I asked, what was the school fees used for? And I didn't really get an answer. I don't think we did get an answer as to what they're coming for. But you know, whenever I looked at it and I couldn't believe what I was seeing on this supply list. And then I said, well, if each student is paying fifty-two dollars, uh, a year... uh, a year, and we have nine hundred students, that's forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars that we should have in our budget line someplace. And I have not seen it because it's not on this, uh, fund balance anyplace. So where is this money from last year and now it's gonna be this year? And some of these things, if you're paying fifty-two dollars, students shouldn't have to be buying paper towels and wet wipes and red ink pens and blocks of paper. Since we are dealing basically with ditto sheets and, uh, what do you call this? The computer. That's basically what we're using for. And so my question is this, this year, are we gonna see this, cause I'm just rounding it off to nine hundred students. Are we gonna see this about forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars on this, uh, fund balance someplace?
Okay. Dr. Alexander, give your answer.
So the, the short answer is no. The fund balance report, um, is a sum of everything in the fund. So nothing is itemized. So the fund balance takes over, uh, uh, oversight view of everything in the fund. What you're speaking of specifically is the district budget. That's what, so it is listed in the district budget. Um, you say it came up to forty-six thousand dollars. No, we will not see that about. Majority of our students have fee waivers, uh, which come from, um, your free or reduced lunch status. Our students who are McKinney Vento, uh, so they have waivers. So you will never receive a hundred percent of the fund from activity fees.
So how much will we receive?
I can't give you that number off the top of my head, just because.
Well, how much did we receive last year?
We can get that number back to you as part of the annual financial report. We can get that to you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So Dr. Alexander, this, the money that she's referring to, we do understand we're not getting a hundred percent. However, all of this money is going into the Student Activity Fund? Or is it being dispersed across?
No. That the stu- the registration goes back to the district operating budget. That does not go to student activities. Student Activity Fund would be in the past when they had to pay the fee for after-school, the fee for band or the fee for gym. Registration goes back to the operating funds of the district.
Okay, thank you. John will call?
Yes. Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Uh, yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Items B, C, and D, Carrie.
Correct. Uh, seven, A, we're gonna take that. Um, we'll take that. Seven B? Approval?
You're taking, no, seven, A.
Yeah, seven, A. We'll take that.
You're taking that?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying, you're taking the personnel.
Isn't that, that's different. I mean, cause that's an action item.
Right. Seven A is an action item. So that's, that's the presentation that we have for that, for say.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
She wants to take all the hires and, uh, personnel.
Correct. Yeah. So Dr. Saverson, you're so beautiful tonight.
Okay, good. Good evening. And thank you for this opportunity to share this presentation.
Good evening.
Okay, so this presentation is on a district-wide new teacher development and support program. So the state of Illinois requires that all school districts have a district mentoring program for brand-new teachers. Whether those teachers are, uh, you know, ten years teaching or, uh, whether they're new to teaching altogether. So, um, they're, uh, all districts require that teachers, uh, new teachers are supported. So, um, this proposal is about an opportunity for our district to support our new teachers as, uh, they enter into our school district. So part of the structure of, of the support would include weekly check-ins with teachers and school administration. So, um, this actually is, is a coaching program. Where the teachers would actually receive coaching from, uh, a coach one hour every other week. And, um, that person would develop individualized improvement plans for each one of the teachers. So those teachers, again, if they needed, for example, if they needed help with management, it would be a program, uh, put together for them to be able to excel as in, um, as it relates to management. If a teacher was struggling with, um, say for example, assessments, we know that, uh, students have to be assessed. So there would be a plan in place for that. And then there would be follow-up that would be provided after, uh, those, those coaching sessions. So some of the common areas that we know new staff members oftentimes have challenges with our areas such as management. Um, many new teachers struggle with management. Um, even if a teacher is new to a district and, and maybe has taught for five or six years someplace else. Many times they struggle with management. So this support would provide, um, uh, support for teachers in the area of management. Classroom environment, when you look at, when you go into a classroom, you assess a classroom environment, you going in, you're looking around, what do you see? What are the children doing? What is the teacher doing? Uh, instructional strategies, uh, instructional delivery. What is, what is the instructor that's happening in that classroom? Uh, is the teacher at the desk, are they, what, what are the children doing? Are they engaged? Um, I have been in some classes and not in this district, but there was a teacher once just teaching away at the board and the children were on the phones. The children were, you know, doing all kinds of other things. Nobody's paying attention. The teacher was pretty much teaching to herself. So, you know, we're, these are things that our, our coach will be able to help us with. A lot of things, uh, questioning techniques. When children are being instructed, you wanna look at what kind of questions the teachers are asking. Are they asking high-level questions? We want children to be able to analyze, create, and evaluate. Or are they asking just simple recall questions? So again, getting, uh, children to be able to problem solve. Uh, we, um, differentiate instruction. That is another area that many of our teachers struggle. Many teachers believe that it's too complicated. It takes way too much time. So they kinda shy away from differentiated instruction. Another thing, formative instruction. One of the things we're focusing this year, and those of us that were in the meeting on Monday, formative instruction. Uh, I'm sorry, assesses. Making certain that our students are assessed along the way. Making certain that they get the information. If they don't get it, then what do we do? Uh, in this program, it will be monthly personalized sessions as well as the bi-weekly coaching. So those personalized sessions include ongoing support and consistent skill development. Opportunities for teachers to reflect on their practice. One of the things that is really good, uh, with teaching or with anything to do self-reflection. But it's even more powerful when you have a coach that is with you. And, you know, the coach may see something different. You may see something, a coach may be able to see something else and help support in that way. Um, this program will provide timely intervention. So a teacher won't have to wait a month or two weeks. Uh, teachers will get that support by the way. And then creating a supporting environment for teachers. We know that teachers, when teachers are not supported, that is a problem. They, they want to leave. They don't wanna be in teaching. You know, we have to support them. And we support our teachers. It provides positive outcomes for all of our students. So the service provider is, um, McGrinnell's Average. And this is a consulting company that, uh, provides services, coaching services to teachers and emerging leaders. So again, the services are tailored to meet the needs of the individual teachers. If I need help with assessments and you wanna give a professional development or management, I'm not, that's not the best use of my time and the district resource. So one of the powerful parts of this program is that the program is tailor, just like we do I E Ps for children. This is like an I E P for the teachers to tailor a plan for that particular teacher. And making certain that over time, you can look, so, um, later we'll talk about how many sessions, but, you know, if I'm in my first session, I may get help with something, then next week I may, you know, it would be something else. At any rate, be able to look back and track and see the progress that the teachers have made. Um, again, the personalized plans, the, uh, feedback, immediate feedback with the coaching, because that teacher and, and the coach are right there together. They can get that immediate feedback. If a teacher is teaching something and, you know, the coach is right there and the coach sees something and says, you know, they may be able to offer suggestions right at that time to help the staff member. Sometimes it can be something really, really small and they can just kinda share that information or whatever. Rather than waiting, you know, for time, waiting a long time for the teacher to get that feedback. And again, using an goal-oriented approach to achieve specific professional goals. So the, the services provide eighteen half-days of coaching sessions to each teacher. So, uh, during those sessions, again, they are individualized sessions. So that coach will be in the classroom with that teacher for an hour. And they are working side by side with that teacher. And, you know, giving them tips as they go along. Again, when those plans are created for the teachers, the teacher and the coach working together to create those plans. I may say, I may think, you know, I need help with assessments with the coach and see something else and say, you know, let's, let's work on that. Or, or situations like that. Additionally, there will be personalized plans for monthly training. So, uh, we know that with new teachers, many times there, there are some common areas. We talked about the manager. Management is an issue, you know, for many new teachers. So during those, um, six sessions, we'll have the oops together. And then, you know, share strategies as it relates to, um, what we can do to, to make those improvements. So the cost of the, the, um, coaching sessions are, well, the, the half-day sessions add up to ten thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, the six personalized planning sessions for those six months is seventy-two hundred dollars with a total cost of eighteen thousand dollars. And then just, just a reminder, you know, we give our teachers what we need. When we support them, they can do their best for students. And that all goes back to student achievement. If we want our students to achieve, we have to support our teachers. And that provides positive outcomes for our students.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Love?
I have a question about, um, way this, well, way the students are placed in the classrooms. Are they placed in there by test scores? Or are they in a classroom each year that class just travels to a new teacher? Because sometime, well, not sometimes, a lot of times from my past experience. That whenever you keep students together and that class is always a behavior class and the teacher's always having a problem, it's best to some, best to break these children up where they're not all together every year. And you see the same problems. You wonder, well, why are they not achieving? Why is this so-and-so's class always uproaring, you know, up in uproar? And it's not the teacher, it's the kids, the students that are in there. They need to be separated. Because from, like I said, from my past experience, when I had a bad classroom, I separated them because I did not want the next teacher to have that problem the whole year. So everybody got one of those kids that clown. And so hopefully, if it was only one in the classroom, then they could manage that. And so it was always better to do that instead of just passing the whole class to the next teacher. And you wonder, well, you know, Miss so-and-so had him last year. Now Miss Miller got him this year. What's wrong? Miss Miller, I thought she was all that, when it wasn't that. You know, you can't do that anymore. I mean, you gotta do something new.
Dr. Alexander here.
So you are correct. We, our students are randomized. Uh, when I first got here, the students were placed in a cohort in kindergarten. And they moved through that cohort up to eighth grade. Um, and they were homogeneously grouped, which basically means they were put together based on ability. So you had a classroom full of low students, a classroom full of students in the middle, and then a classroom full of high students. Well, that works in many cases, but my issue was that there was no systems and structure, uh, in the district to see, is this kid making progress? Kids are always stay low. So are they making progress? Are we able to move them up to higher level classes? So, uh, because that system and structure was not in place, we moved away from it. And so all of our classes are randomized every year. Uh, once the classes are randomized, we look at the rosters. And we may have to move some ones and twos just because of personality conflicts or behavior issues. But for the most part, every year they are randomized.
Ms. Kimbo?
Yeah. All right, so, uh, I, I think this is a really good plan. Um, but in terms of what you just stated, sometimes when you're, uh, stuck in a particular level, you stay there because you, you need to be able to be around students. Yes. And so sometimes that, when you're, when your skill level is at a certain point, you rise sometimes to, and other students can help you as well. Uh, so my question is in terms of, um, when the coaching will take place? So is that during the school day while the teacher's in the classroom with students? Is it after school? Is it before school? When does that coaching happen with the chi- between the teacher and the coach?
Correct. Okay, so the, the coach will actually be in the classroom with the teacher, working alongside the teacher. And so they will have time. They will, you know, I, I mean, it's, it's things like, you know, just providing little tips as that, as they're doing instruction. Um, I can think of one example. Um, I know from previous programs with coaching, there was a teacher having this really difficult time in the transition and the kids from one subject to the next. And so the coach just had, I mean, very, i- i- it wasn't, you know, taking over the class or anything like that. It was just like, um, can I show you where that I can, you know, let's get him on and I can get him to the next class. It was just, it was taking the teacher forever to get move the kids from one thing to the other. And so the coach just lined the kids up and showed the teacher. Very, not making a big deal or anything like that. Just, just very quietly showed. And, and that teacher did that forever. And then the difference in the class was working side by side. And, um, you know, just sometimes you can just see one little thing that can make a difference.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not finished. Thank you. And, and so, uh, that is true. Uh, but there are also some very deep instructional practices that need to be discussed outside of the realm of students, right? Uh, where the teacher really can, you can go through the day and, and, and talk about some of those things. That, that's one thing. Uh, and I find it to be very difficult to have those kind of deep conversations with students, you know, around. And then another thing, a, a lot of times in terms of, uh, students misbehaving, um, that too gets into engagement, challenge. Um, uh, you engaging with students and engaging with each other, uh, that minimizes a lot of behavior as well. Okay, and one other thing, um.
Ms., Ms. Kimbo?
Yes.
Can you jot that down? We wanna move to the Ms. Brown right quick. Something we wanna, so just, we wanna.
So. Get back in here as well. Um, so I'mma, I'mma have my fam- my friend and family in a con- conversation here. Uh.
No.
How, 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 how are we, uh, so I did do a little bit of tracking around who this person was and she was liking your profile on LinkedIn. A lot. But how, how did you come to this individual? And how would she qualify to do what we're asking her to do?
I can speak to that. Uh, we attended a, uh, I attended a superintendent training in, uh, North Berlin School District. Uh, Berlin North, North Borough, A. Uh, and they were talking, it was about showcasing instructional practices in your district. And everybody's dealing with this teacher shortage issue. Uh, but what we don't talk about, we're all dealing with the teacher retention issue. And so one of the things that they talked about was how they created this ecosystem for teachers to learn and grow. Uh, and they used an example from the cartoon Magic School Bus. Uh, the teacher, Ms. Frizzle, she said, take chances, get messy, and make mistakes. And so that was synonymous of, you have to allow teachers a safe space to learn and grow. Um, and so they had contracted with McGrinnell's Average, uh, consulting. And they talked about all of these different things. So the embedded coaching, they do something when they all come together after school. So similar to what Ms. Kimbrough talked about, those tough conversations when you dive deep, they call it the hour of power. And I was really impressed because of the feedback that the teachers gave. And it was more like, this is even more better than our principals give. Because our principals are not in our classroom for an hour. And they may not jump in and model a lesson, or I can't call the principal when I'm writing a lesson plan. And so I was really impressed by it. Uh, we looked at other consultants and, and, and as you know, we pick up consultants because of what we see. Not like we just go search the internet, but it's because of what we see is what's worked in other districts. So I was. So, I was really impressed, um, uh, by what, uh, McReynolds Average brought. And the thing that really impressed me was that it's not just one person, it's a whole team. So, you have your content area people, you have your social emotional people, you have your behavior people. And that's even different than what we can offer the school. Usually, your instructional coach is one-dimensional. If they're a literacy coach, that's all they focus on. And so, I like the fact that we have access to, um, a group of professionals. Um, the president, McReynolds Average, uh, she's been principal, chief academic officer. Uh, she does consulting all over South Creek County, uh, with the same thing. So, I think they're a highly qualified group. Uh, one of their consultants is the same person who did our family communication, uh, Dr. Skates. So, Dr. Skates has been with us a couple of years, uh, and they do some of the family community engagement pieces. So, uh, I'm really excited, as Dr. Saberson said, we have, uh, a lot of new teachers this year. And aside from, you know, teachers who've gone to school in America, who's worked in America, the issues that they have, now we have people who are coming in where we have to bridge a cultural gap. We have to bridge a knowledge gap. So, uh, it's going to be, we need more intensive support to make it happen.
Ms. Kimbrough?
Oh, Ms. Love, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so in terms of, um, the monitoring follow-up, follow-through piece, um, because it seems to be like goal-oriented. So, how, how would a teacher, will a teacher have a coaching session on? Um, like, who's going back to monitor whether those things have been improved upon?
So, that's the coach's role, that's the coach's role. So, the coach, when they first start, they'll meet with the coach, the teacher and the principal. They'll talk about goals and talk about expectations. Um, and then, from there, they create, so just like she said, I E P, you create your plan. These are goals, these are benchmarks, here's the feedback. Uh, and because they're coming multiple times in a month, all right, next time I come here, I want to see this, 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 we'll be looking forward.
Ms. Love, oh, no, Sherri.
So, um, who was responsible for the new teacher mentorship this year? I know we need it, we have to have it, it's across, um, Cook. But who's responsible doing it? Do we have a consultant? Who's responsible?
No, so our, per the union contract, the union runs their new teacher mentorship program. However, their program is very different than what this is. This is taking it a step further. The union's program is run by teachers of the union. Um, it's not a coaching model. They meet once a month, Dr. Saberson, once every month, after school for like an hour. Um, and they talk about very high-level topics. It's not specifically what is your practice. The union cannot work and create goals with the teacher and the principal. So, this takes the onus away from, uh, or responsibility away from a teacher telling another teacher what to do more than the principal, the teacher and the consultant coming up with the plan. So, we still have the New Teacher Network, uh, but again, their focus is not as heavily on classroom instruction and general practice as it is, how do you get through the school year, compliance? Here's what the evaluation system means and this is how it impacts you and things of that nature.
Well, I think it's great, but, um, like Ms. Kimbrough said, as far as the follow-up and the follow-through, I think that's the most important part. And then, um, did we fact-check to see if anybody in the district could actually, um, do this part as well as opposed to hiring, um, the, this network? Did we look into that as opposed to hiring her because I believe it's probably somebody in the district that can do this as well?
Well, so, I can respond to that in this way. Uh, my, my philosophy of teacher coaching evaluation is this. You have a coach and you have an evaluator and that should be two different people. Your relationship with your evaluator is always going to be contentious because this person determines my livelihood. This the person determines, do I come back next year? Your relationship with your coach is different. That's a person who I'm vulnerable with, that's a person who, uh, I can share my insecurities with, that's a person who I can learn from. So, we didn't want to have an administrator in the district to do that. Of course, you can't have a teacher in the district to do it, but we didn't want to have any administrator in the district because if you're the principal A P of that building, you're their evaluator. So, bringing in somebody from the outside, um, more, it, it creates a safe space. It's not evaluative. Um, it's one of those things where the teacher, the coach and the principal say, listen, this is something we really need to work on. Now, it may come from your evaluation. They say, hey, you're really struggling with classroom management. So, now your coach can really dive deep with you. So, uh, I think it's important to have somebody who is not part of the organism. The other part of it is, we receive money every year from, uh, our Title II grant, which is teacher quality. And that grant is created to develop teachers. So, teachers going to conferences, teachers having coaches embedded support, uh, that's what it's designed for.
Ms. Love?
Okay, since the board has, since the board is the one that approved all of these hiring, in the future, can we get whoever wants to be hired here, have them submit a presentation online? No, she did that. I'm talking about the people that we are hiring, so that we can see who we are hiring.
The proposals on your board packet?
I have the proposal. I'm talking about the person themselves. I like to see who I'm hiring, not the, uh.
I think the proposal should be in the board packet.
They have pictures?
With the motion, pictures of.
Oh, the people who are, are you asking?
The person that, they, they, they don't do proposals.
I, I think you. What I'm saying is this.
Oh, you mean the, the person that.
Whoever comes in here.
Right, right.
I'm talking about, what I'm talking about is this. In the future, I hope that we meet the persons that we are gonna hire online. Any, everybody that wants to get hired here, even the after-school people. We would like, I would like to see them before we hire them and then we end up paying them all this money and stuff. And we don't even know the people. We haven't even met them. You know, we might see them online later on, you know, on the computer, but we have, they can do a presentation online. Just so I can hear their voice, see what they're talking about.
Okay, I, I. I, I understand what you're saying.
There's nothing worse than hiring a stranger and then you walk and don't even know them if they have you.
Yeah, that's true.
That's what I'm talking about.
That's true.
You don't know who's in your building, whatever, you're there.
So, anybody, I mean, I agree with you. So, anybody we, we hire as far as, uh, programs and whatnot, it would be nice to have them present. Yeah, so, yeah, do their own presentation.
They don't have, no, they don't have to be here, just do a presentation online.
No, no, this might as well happen here.
Okay, well, whatever, make it easy.
We, we have to be careful.
Yeah, because sometimes we really don't know.
Careful when you, and my C S B O's nodding, attorney. You, you have to be very careful when you do that, when you're bringing in consultants and presentations and y- y- you have to be very careful. So, I understand what you're saying. Uh, but yes, we will figure out a way to make some patent concessions for that.
And, and maybe if it's just, I mean, so there wasn't a proposal in here. Um, and so, it forced me as a board member to go and have to look. Uh, and that's where I started to see the clicks. I saw this presentation.
So, and, and I'm, that's a, that's a oversight because there is a proposal. Uh, the full proposal and I'm guessing it just didn't make it to the presentation. But every time we submit the, uh, it's like the, the proposal they give us for services with the scope of it and everything else. So, I apologize, I thought that was in there.
Okay, I have a quick question. Uh, in terms of the monthly training sessions? Would that be like after-school with all teachers that, that they're, um?
Yes, that's the after-school part.
So, would teachers have a stipend for staying up?
Students, teachers do receive compensation for their activities.
All right, thank you. Thank you. So, um, so seven, A. Approval of New Teacher Network Mentoring Program Services. Suggested motion being hereby moved that the Board of Education approve Ms. Dina McReynolds Average to provide coaching and professional development for the New Teacher Network Mentoring Program for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars, even as presented. May I have a motion? It's not really hard to do a motion.
Motion.
May I have a second? Second by Ms. Kimbrough. John, may I have a roll call?
Yes, Brown?
Pass.
Dixon?
Yes.
Dolar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
No, there's no proposal.
Story?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Okay, um, moving on to. Eight, seven, B, Approval of Emergency Campus Security Contract. Suggested motion being hereby moved that the Board of Education approves the emergency agreement with benefit protection group to provide campus mon- monitoring and security services for the district at the anticipated cost of one hundred seventy-five thousand fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents for this twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year as presented. May I have a motion? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Love. May I have a second? Second by Ms. Story. Roll call, John. Oh, no, my bad. Be good, right? Roll call, John.
Question.
Oh, okay.
Question just to the attorney. Since we had a bid out already and now we coming back with this, I know it's an emergency because we, we do need security, are we okay with hiring, because there was a part of the B P G? Say it loud and put, get the, give him the mic. So, so, give him the mic, we have to hear the yes loud and on record.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. So, it will not come back to us.
I also think you, you could probably approve this as a professional services, exceptions to the bidding statute.
And thank you so much, uh, attorney, protractor, okay? So, may I have a roll call, John?
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Dolar, absent, Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Public comments, if you intend to speak, can you come?
Anyone, any comments? Say yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. If you intend to speak, please fill out completely a questions and comment form and pre-present to the Superintendent Secretary at this time. The board will be prepared to address those comments related to the agenda, related to the agenda within a reasonable time. However, if the comment may be forwarded to the Superintendent for an individual response, no other discussion or action will be taken place. Please refrain, remain seated until you are recognized by the board president. Every person intending to speak must come to the podium to state your comments. Please state your name, comment, and you'll be limited to three minutes.
I just have a question about this, uh, board member Dolar. Is this person still on the board or what's going on with that?
New business?
Boy update, we had no boy updates.
Thank you. Policies, uh, first read, press plus, issue one, number one fifteen. So, that's, um, just for the first read, um, it's not due. Uh, we can add that on our committee to hold, have the fully discussion if there are any discussions, what's to have you? And adoption is? In September, so we have to have it done by September.
So, I do ask that we have some discussion if not here, at least before the next time it comes up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um.
Uh, in turn, is that the press plus, right?
Yeah.
One sixteen?
One fifteen.
One fifteen?
Yes. One sixteen just came out, that's not even close.
Yeah, but I.
But one sixteen.
What, definitely, one sixteen just came out and it's not due until September.
December, yeah.
Put it in time for that.
Okay, but. The webinar today and the, uh, attorney, the attorney, he's available when we go through one sixteen because they suggested that the attorney be present during the discussion of one sixteen.
And what reason?
I, I'm curious.
There is one policy on there and I forget what one is. But with that policy, there might even be an extension on the deadline for that policy because of the law that, that, uh, goes along with it. I'm sure you guys will be. Yeah, it just came out. So, you, yeah, so, first of us did inform everyone or whoever their newsletter is, you know, distributed to, that there is one policy that's, you'll see, Chris, I am sure you will. But I don't remember the policy number, but because of it, I know what Ms. Kimbrough's talking about. There is one that's gonna be up and, and it's a pretty serious one, so. This is one fifteen, she's mentioned one sixteen.
Thank you. Uh, let us see, so, I know that, uh, last year, Ms. Story, you were the delegate. So, we're kind of opening up to, uh, um, if we want to have some, um, someone to designate themselves to be the delegate this year for the Triple I Conference. Um, so, you wanted to. John, I don't know nobody else, come on. So, we can take a, um, a vote, okay? Okay, Ms. Story, you wanna, you wanna be the delegate? All right, so Ms. Story, you the delegate. Everybody go okay with that?
Yes.
Everybody's all right, thumbs up, okay. So, um, that information is not ready right now. So. For the delegate, for the voting. So, I guess around the next meeting.
So, it'll probably be around September or October and as usual, we'll submit those, uh, I guess, poll questions in the board, like a board update. And then, it'll be finally approved at a board meeting, probably in September, October.
They're having a meeting in October, so.
You may want to use your mic, it's okay.
It's a meeting in October, um, so they probably gonna have all the information out in September. The meeting is, um, I want to say October third, October third.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll do the questionnaire with the poll and whoever, you know, this election. And then, as usual, uh, whatever is the majority decision on each question?
Yeah.
That will be submitted by Ms. Story, the delegate.
Okay, thank you. Um, board, uh, reports, anyone has a comment or anything? Go ahead, Ms. Love.
At our last meeting, not the, uh, July meeting, but the one we had afterwards, what was that, um, about the budget and stuff? Okay, the whole meeting. And I was talking about the board should be getting more money this year because of the taxes. And you'd say, well, you may not, but I'm gonna tell you this right now. The school, because my, on my tax, it says, uh, Calumet School District one thirty-two. Last year, twenty-twenty-two, my taxes, my tax was two hundred seventy-two thou, me, wait a minute, two hundred seventy-two dollars and nineteen cents. For twenty-twenty-three is seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. This stuff went up to five, it went up to five, well, by five hundred fifteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. So, if everybody is getting a tax increase, because my daughter's, uh, her taxes are ridiculous. Her monthly payment on her house had doubled, she was at seven hundred, now it's fourteen hundred. And so, this board, this district should be getting some money with all these taxes going up. So, don't say later on, well, we didn't get but this amount, I want the full amount. Know it.
So, Ms. Love, I, I sympathize with you, I understand the tax increase. Um, Calumet Park took a seventy-two percent tax increase. Um, however, that is currently at the Cook County Board for Review. Uh, from what they are saying, and Chris maybe has some more information, they miss assess, one, they miss assess the, the property. Two, they were, they're supposed to assess the property frequently, uh, but they didn't. And so, essentially, you're paying back taxes and. And so essentially, you're paying back taxes and wrong taxes and all of that. So I think by the next bill, which comes out in February, I think, or is due in February, the taxes will levelize. The reality is that even though the tax number goes up, that doesn't mean the district will see it all. Uh, you have to also remember that some people don't have the five hundred dollar increase to pay. So our tax collection rate, we worked with the treasurer yesterday, Dr. Gaspro and I, we're about seventy percent. We were budgeting at seventy-three percent, uh, but when we look at, uh, tax bills, it's about seventy percent of the people actually paid their taxes. And then now you have everybody going to the assessors' offices to get exemptions and senior freezes. Uh, all of the businesses now, they're saying, hey, I own this building, but you're saying it's worth a million dollars, only worth a hundred thousand. So they want tax, uh, rebates. Then, after the taxes come up, you'll have individuals do tax appeals, uh, based on individual funds. You all took too much money for here, took too much money for that. So, I do think that we will see, uh, a larger share. Not necessarily that we will see a larger, uh, revenue to the district though, but we're watching it.
Yeah, that's all I want us to do is watch, because I know we're gonna get more money.
Anyone, uh, share?
Just in, in terms of that, what about, like, the T I F, what, what are we paying, I know we're a T I F district, so do we have to pay?
We're not a T I F district.
We not a T I F district? Uh, no, um, that was years ago. I know, maybe, uh, Rick said we was a T I F district.
Well, T I Fs expire.
Okay.
They expire, but Calumet Park does not have any T I Fs, uh, that include the school right now.
Ms. Brown?
Uh, I just wanna say, Mr. Corley, uh, kudos. I'm sorry, I'm gonna miss your big party, uh, on Saturday, but hopefully I get a chance to see the gym, the local...
Why you call him?
He the man, he, he the man. Uh, but, but I, I'm sorry that, that I, I missed this, this fat, but congratulations to everybody, uh, to staff. Uh, congratulations, hope this school year, um, is, is full of excitement, but not, not the bad conference. Um, and, um, like, hopefully that the new staff is settling. I do, Dr. Alexander, um, it, it sounds like we had seven new teachers tend to come, or we have seven new, uh, individuals from another country here, here. Uh, I, I do hope we get a chance to get an update on how they are progressing and how our students are reacting to, um, this new high groups of, of teachers.
I'm gonna get a chance, I was just asking, first of all, I wanna say, um, welcome back, I know, um, to teachers that are here, but welcome back, I know you all is feel some type of way when the teachers come back and then get the students, so I feel your, I'm not gonna say pain, but I feel your excitement. And with that being said, I just wanna, um, let the board know that I did attend, um, when I heard someone from, um, Protector's office about the new laws that's coming out. So maybe, Dr. Alexander, we could get her, what was her name? Mary, yes, we could get her, we need to have her so the board can hear the new laws, they are very, very interesting to know. Um, so maybe, you know, we can, um, get, set it up definitely, because that is good to know. And I know it was a copyright on there, Protector, so that's why I didn't print out the slides. So, 'cause I was gonna pass it out to everybody. But at the same token, she, if, if, if we could get somebody in to discuss that with us, because that was very, very helpful of all the new slides, and also, what is it, that Title IX that they've been discussing? She had to discuss that also, so, so I think it's very, very important that the board will know that. Thank you so much.
Um, Ms. Um, Kim, I mean, uh... Ms. Dixon?
I just wanted to say, uh, I thought Monday was very exciting, and you did an excellent job as forever put it together for the teachers institution. And due to the fact that we have new teachers coming in from another place, I think that, um, the mentoring would have been, the counseling would have been really good for them. Uh, because they seemed very excited, they do. And speaking of breaking the barriers, I think that would have been a great, the coaching would have been a great thing for them to come in, to let them know what they need to do, what, what they don't need to do. So, unfortunately, we didn't get that, but, um, again, hopefully we can move forward, and they do, they, they be okay without, without district, that's all I'm gonna say.
Um, I did have a, a, the opportunity to be at the Teachers Institute, and it was, uh, phenomenal. Um, again, meeting the new, uh, teachers from another countries. Uh, yes, they were very eager to be here, excited to be here. Um, I'm looking forward to those students being able to be in, in classrooms and getting to understand and know, uh, other cultures, and also being able to understand, um, from a different perspective of, um, new teaching. Um, I also wanted to say, uh, that I'm glad to see the teachers back. Um, it was a, a fun, um, um, assignment, whatever they, they were doing, and, uh, Ms. Love and myself and Ms. Dixon, we had the opportunity to, uh, be a part of with the teachers', um, little assignment or whatever. Um, and let me just say this, the breakfast was nice, uh, from organic life. Uh, didn't realize that, uh, they could lay a spread out. I am quite sure the students is gonna enjoy those, um, the, the fresh foods that are gonna be cooked. And, um, and thank you to, I don't even know this young lady's name. Ms. Natalie, you, you laid the spread out, I really appreciate your, your assistance there, um, very good. Um, and I was hoping to enjoy the cookies as well. Um... Yeah, then we finally got some cookies. But, um, yeah, and, and, and Dr. Dr. Alexander, thank you for facilitating, uh, the institution, the institute day for the teachers. Mr. Corley, I wanna say congratulations to you again, being a G pop. He's a new G pop, he's a granddad. Well, yes.
Congratulations, G pop.
That's the new, the new language, the new language now, G pop. But, uh, again, I, I appreciate, um, your staff and, and all, um, coming up to the open school year. And I hope that our new teachers, and I hope the staff, all the staff, teachers, whatever, I hope that they're there for the, uh, ribbon cutting. It is so significant for our staff to be there. Um, Dr. Dr. Alexander, I hope that they, the teachers are welcome to be there. They are, okay, uh, for the ribbon cutting, so, uh, that's all I have to say, thank you.
I have one other question.
Yeah, Ms. Love?
Dr. Alexander, what happened to the balloons?
What balloons?
The balloons for open day of school. You know, we always have a horseshoe-shaped balloon out there so that we can high-five the students. It was nothing out there, what happened? We didn't have the funds for it, or, or, we didn't have the music or anything.
So first day of school activities are what the principal, uh, in the school, I don't direct that.
Okay, so it was the committee? Okay, it was the committee?
Yeah, it's what the school, it's what the schools decide to do. Um, we've had this conversation, I think, almost every year since I've been here.
No, last year, we had the balloons.
Well, no, I, I was gonna go in a different direction. We've had this conversation every year since I've been here. Uh, and I've kinda gotten chewed out because we didn't have a DJ, a band, loud music. Uh, and I would just be the first to tell you, that's not necessarily my personal, um, think, my personal best practice, right? Um, I, I'm, I leave it up to principals, what you all decide to do. However, uh, the first day of school, uh, is chaotic, music makes it chaotic, all of the fanfare makes it chaotic. Uh, and so we, we look for ways to welcome the students, welcome the parents. Uh, however, uh, I think they just know me, and they don't go all crazy. Not sure about the balloons, uh, actually, the balloons were Ms. Brown's idea. So she's no longer at this school, so, um, that's probably why you didn't see it. Uh, no, no.
There you go.
We just look forward to next year.
Next year, and we have...
So, moving to closed session, uh, being here by move that the Board of Education go into the closed session for the discussion pursuit section two C three of the Open Meetings Act to consider the reasons establishing or feeling a vacancy on the body, public body information regarding appointment, employment, or dismissal of an employee or officer contracts, grievances, negotiations, pending threat, or imminent litigation, real estate, student discipline, super, I'm sorry, superintendents and or board evaluation performances. Motion?
I think you said all of them.
Okay, I, I did. Ms. Brown, second?
Second.
Ms. Dixon, may I have a roll call, John?
Yes, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon? Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
No, no, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion carried at seven nineteen, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we convene, did all that? Time, all that? Okay, roll call, Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried at eight oh six P M.
So, um, approving, uh, item, letters, I mean, letter A. Personnel. Personnel items. Being here by move that the Board of Education approve, Ms...
A.
Oh, it's a letter A, uh, personnel items, A one, A two, A three. May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Story, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Roll call, John.
Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Item A, carried.
Alright, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Brown, second? Second by Story. Roll call, John.
Brown?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Golar, absent, Kimbrough?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Story?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried at eight oh seven.